All right, so we are looking at follow-up videos. Well, the follow-up video for the exam review. There were a couple of questions, two off of the end of chapter questions that I did not get to, and three from the spring 23 exam. So let's check. First up are the exam, not the exam questions, are the ones from the textbook. So you can see it here on the screen. It's how many liters of antifreeze ethylene glycol? And there's a formula there. Would you add to a car radiator containing 6.5 liters of water? If the coolest winter temperature in your area is negative 20 degrees Celsius, then calculate the boiling point of this water ethylene glycol mixture. So this is probably one of those questions that someone was alluding to. And I think that I tried to mention as well where because you actually have right here something about things being very colds. We're going to wind up calculating something about freezing point. And then because it actually asks you for the boiling point, we're going to basically do the calculation a second time. So this is the kind of question that the first half is really good and is just fine as an exam question. The second point where you would then calculate the boiling point instead, maybe not as useful. So let's go ahead and walk through this. So we're assuming that that winter temperature is that negative 20 degrees Celsius. So we are thinking about the fact that, gosh, where did it go? I had it. There they are. So we are using these. So since we're starting off with freezing point, we are using this formula down here. So essentially, it tells me that the freezing point is negative 20 degrees Celsius, either because I'm going to go look it up in the table or because I know the freezing point of water is zero degrees Celsius. So then I'm going to solve for that change in temperature. So I'm going to get that that change in temperature is 20 degrees Celsius. So then I can go ahead and use it technically, either one of these. It does give you the formula for ethylene glycol here. And what you might notice is it's a bunch of carbons and hydrogens and oxygens, but without a whole lot of, and there is some structural information. This is just going to be a molecular formula. So this is going to have an I of one. So depending on how you were taught, you may have been taught that therefore you use this top equation because you, the I is one, and therefore you don't really need it. I taught my students that you use this formula because the I is one and anytime you multiply times one is just itself. So I'm going to just demonstrate that bottom one. Change in temperature is equal to Kf times Im, where my changed temperature is that 20 degrees that we just solved for Kf. I can go look up in the table. It's 1.86. You would just look at the potentially useful information page for that. I'll need that eventually. Sorry, I was grabbing other things, but I can go ahead and grab that. Some page, oh, that's not, that's the wrong thing. That's the right thing. Yeah, so 1.86. And then walk over here. Times, we said that the I is one. And then we're just going to solve for that molality. Now, we have some information about this, but we're going to, I'm going to use that in another step. I know some people might combine it. But we're just going to solve for this to see where we get. So I get a molality of 10.75 as my molality. Now we need to think about what that molality is. So that molality is supposed to be moles of solute divided by kilograms of solvent. Actually, do I need that? Wait, I got the molality. Oh, right here. How many liters? I do have to still keep going. It's like, wait, I just need the boiling point. Do I have to keep going? So this has two parts. One, it asks for the liters and said, this is where we're going to do some more math. But the thing that I was considering is it also just asked me to calculate the boiling point. If all I have to do is calculate the boiling point next, then all I really need to do is take this number and then use the boiling point formula. So we're actually going to do that first. So here's this guy. So I'm going to calculate the change in the boiling point is equal to 0.52. 0.52 times one times the new molality that I just found because we just solved for that. Times 0.52. So my change in the boiling point is 5.59 degrees Celsius. My equation actually tells me to just get to add. So my new boiling point is 100 degrees because that is the boiling point of water. So so in the table. Plus 5.59. So my new boiling point is 105.59. So there's the boiling point. That's done. No problem. Solve for the molality from the freezing point and then recalculate. But that wasn't the only thing the question asked us to do. Okay, so we calculated the boiling point. Yay. Yeah, no joke, I'm doing that right now. Then the other thing it asked us to do is how many liters of the antifreeze would I add? And then I've got some other information. I have information about liters and I also have information about density. And I want liters at the end of the day. So what we're going to do is first of all, I need the ethylene glycol by itself. And I don't have that. I have the fact that this molal, that's in kilograms of solvent. So what I can get is I could get moles of solute if I knew things about the solvent. So this is water for one, and it tells me I have 6.5 liters. So there's an assumption that your textbook makes, which is the textbook assumes that you know that for pure water, the density is 1 gram per 1 milliliter. This is, milliliter is supposed to be on the bottom. So this is an assumption your textbook makes. I do not know what happened because when I first started teaching like 10 years ago, about 75% of the students that walked in the door knew this without us ever telling them. About 2019, we were down to like 25-ish percent of students knew this without telling them. Now it's lower. So I don't really know why your book still makes this assumption because they keep updating the textbook every couple of years. They should know better by now. Y'all don't know this. So I'm aware that y'all don't know this. So we usually either give it in problems or I warn people that this is something you should memorize. So if you don't know this already, I'm just going to go ahead and tell you to memorize this because the pure water density is 1 gram per 1 milliliter, which means that since the problem told us that we have 6.5 liters, what I can do is take my 6.5 liters and I'm going to go ahead and use this factor because that's the one that I have memorized. And say that in one liter, I have 1,000 milliliters. And then in one milliliter, I have 1 gram, but I don't want that because I have kilograms for molality. So there are 1,000 grams in 1 kilogram. You might notice as I've done this out now that my thousands will cancel. So the other thing you might have memorized here is that it is in fact 1 kilogram per 1 liter. Same idea. So I am just going to get out here 6.5 kilograms. So since I have that information, what I can now go ahead and do is, there's different ways to solve for this. I usually like to just. Sorry about that. What I like to do is essentially taking this 10.75 molal and saying that basically this means that I have some number of moles of my ethylene glycol, which is my solute. And then just essentially plug this in as if it was an equation in 6.5 kilograms of the solvent. And then all I'm, so this is using the definition as if it was a formula. So all I'm going to do now is go ahead and solve. I'm going to plug the numbers in correctly and I do that. So I get 69.875 moles of the solute. Great, so now I at least have my ethylene glycol alone. What the problem want? Liters, it wants liters. So in order to do liters, I'm going to need to use the density. The density is in grams per volume, which means I need to take my moles and I need to get grams. Well, we can certainly do that. This is, there's two carbons. There's two oxygens. There's, this is 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 hydrogens. So that means that's 2 times 12.01 and 2 times 16. And what did I put that line there for? I have to do the, substitute the, whatever. One note is not happy with me already. Great, 6 times 1.008. We can figure out the molar mass. This is another thing that we don't often have y'all do on exams now that we're in GNCAM 2 because you guys have usually progressed to a point where like, we know you guys can do this if we ask and it's a bit tedious to do this for a lot of the problems. Okay, let's cross our fingers at this. Okay, 62.068. So I take my moles and say that in one mole from the molar mass, I could get 62.068 grams. So that gives me 4,337 grams. I don't want grams, I want liters. So I have to go back up again to the problem. Density is 1.11 grams per milliliter. So keep in mind when it says that, that means that's 1.11 grams in 1 milliliter. This is a ratio. So I get to use it whichever end essentially that I need. Grams are here on top, so I want grams on the bottom. And that's in 1 milliliter. The problem does ask for liters. I'm not going to scroll back up. So there are 1,000 milliliters in 1 liter. So divide by 1.11 and then divide by 1,000. And I got 3.9 or so liters. That's the final answer. So the parts of this are good. This is one of those questions where the pieces are good. Oh, you guys couldn't see it when I gestured to the table because I didn't, I forgot. So the pieces of this problem are good. The pieces of this problem are pretty useful. But the calculating both the boiling point and the and the liter is not so good. But using density to solve for something, excellent, definitely useful. Using freezing point calculations and boiling point calculations, all the pieces, all the parts are useful. The whole thing is a little bit long, especially since it asks you for both boiling point and the number of liters. That's a little, that's a little much. Oh, wait, sorry, I was pulled up. I do. So I lost something in some of the rounding. But I will show you guys the key. So I rounded probably a little bit early. So the key says 3.93 and I think I got like 3.91. So I did round a little bit early on there. But overall, they did pretty much the same thing. Oh, they rounded early. That's what happened. Look at that. They have 10.8 as their molal. I carried extra decimal places, so I had 10.75. They rounded early, not me. So the key, the key and I are close. If, I realize not exactly the same, but the key and I are close. Where did that thing go? Trying to grab, oh, there it is, second part of the key. So the key for all the end of chapter questions are posted. This at least looks about the same. Again, I carried 5.59, so I carried an extra decimal place, but otherwise that's the same. Okay. So one question down, four to go. Those are all the exam questions. I don't know, where did they go? Yeah, there it is. Okay, found it. Next up. At 25 degrees Celsius, the vapor pressure of pure water is a certain amount in millimeters of mercury and that of seawater is something different, assuming seawater contains only sodium chloride. Estimate its molal concentration. So this again is going to be basically a two-step problem. So this says vapor pressure. So since we are dealing with vapor pressure, we are in fact working with the problem and the equation where we are using vapor pressure. So I'm going to go ahead and take a screenshot of that and put that over here. Actually, I'm going to grab a couple of them to show you something because that's what I do. So we have a couple of different equations that do all involve pressure. This is vapor pressure though, so we want this one. These two down here are osmotic pressure. So they're not the same. Notice they don't have a P, they have pi, so they are different. So we want osmotic, we want vapor pressure, so we want this top one. So it says a pure water is 23.7. So that's, this number is for the, nope, please. So that water, that is for the pure, which is right there. And the seawater is the other one. So what I am going to do is I'm going to go ahead and solve for the thing I can solve for, which in this case is going to be the mole fraction of the solvent times 23.76. So I'm going to get a mole fraction of 0.996. Copy this down. Maybe I should get some more coffee. So in here. Hold on just a minute, sorry. So that's my mole fraction of the solvent. What does it actually want? That's not what it wants at all. It wants the molal concentration of the sodium chloride. So we got some work to do. So first of all, it's nice to go ahead and take a minute and break apart what this really means. So this is the amount of water in moles divided by 1, which is just divided by your total moles. Now, so what I need to do is this is all about ratios. And so the hard thing is, is that I'm going to go from mole fraction to molal concentration, which means that I'm going to go from one ratio to another ratio. In the problem that we just did, it actually told me, hey, you have 6.5 liters. This problem doesn't do that. I don't have an amount. So I get to pick whatever amount that I want as long as I'm consistent. So what I'm actually going to go ahead and do is I'm going to just go ahead and say that this top number, this 0.96717 is my moles of water. And that I have one mole total, which means I can go ahead and subtract and say that whatever I get out of this is the number of moles of ions. Now, this is the other part where you have to make an assumption. So I did that because my total should be one, so I subtracted. And then this is the moles. This is not the moles of sodium chloride though. This is a coligative property, which means that this is about the amount of stuff dissolved. Sodium chloride should have a theoretical Van Hooft factor of 2. So this is the moles of ions. I have two ions for every one sodium chloride. So since I actually do just want sodium chloride, I'm going to divide that by 2. And that tells me I have this many moles of sodium chloride. And again, I'm doing that because based on the coligative property of vapor pressure, that would have been based on the actual particles. And when you put sodium chloride into water, you should get two pieces. You should get sodium, you should get chloride. So essentially, we're trying to backtrack because what the problem is going to ask me for is the molality of the sodium chloride. All is one thing. But the vapor pressure actually is accounting for how many pieces and parts because that's that real life application. Okay, so what do I have? I have moles of sodium chloride and I'm going to molality. So I need moles of sodium chloride divided by kilograms of solvent, which in this case is water. So good news, I have the top part already. So that 0.016415, I already have. And then here on the bottom, I see kilograms of water. So I'm going to take my moles of water that I decided. 96717 moles of water. And you do, we can add this up real quick. There's one oxygen, that's an atomic mass of 16. Two times the one hydrogen of 1.008. So I am pulling this off the periodic table, by the way. I'm sorry I didn't mention that for those of you that wanted to see how you calculate a molar mass. I did not walk through that. So that is going to the periodic table, taking the atomic masses and figuring out how many of those you need for each one. Darn, I was hoping that sleeping would get my voice back. 18.016 grams. Times 0.9777. 17.42? Mol, no, grams, kilograms of water. Oh, but I just need kilograms. So I need to take this and say that in 1,000 grams, there's 1 kilogram. So that gets me So up here in my molality, 0.0174 kilograms. So whatever that is, is my molality. I get a molality of sodium chloride of 0.943. Sorry, okay. Now what I'm going to do is I'm going to hop over to the key. And if I, I think I remember which one this is. So all I'm actually going to do, because they do this in a different order than I did. So all I'm actually going to do is I'm just going to nab the final answer because they, they get to the same place because it's all about ratios. But in fact, they did start from a different assumption than me. And again, I made, we, the book and I made some different rounding choices. But they got 0.942, I got 0.943. That's going to be as close to the same as we're going to get. And you might notice that the differences do not bother me. When we write exam questions and we have all those lovely multiple choice questions, the differences in between them are usually greater than this. Or they might just say 0.94 and stop. So I'm not concerned about this difference because on an exam, you guys would not actually notice. Or you would just pick the number that's closest and they would be far enough apart from each other that there would be one that is obviously closer. Okay, next up, we are on to end of exam questions is where we are. We're on to exam questions. So the first one is number one. It says, two aqueous solutions are prepared. One molal of, that is calcium nitrate and two molal of lithium fluoride. Which of the following statements is true? The calcium solution has a higher vapor pressure and a lower freezing point. The calcium solution is a lower vapor pressure and a lower freezing point. So bleh. So whenever you've got this many answer choices that are all the same, there's a couple of things that are useful to do. One thing is to take a look and just notice the fact that this does say vapor pressure, vapor pressure, vapor pressure, vapor pressure. And this says freezing point, freezing point, freezing point, freezing point. So there are two different coligative properties we need to investigate and that's what they are. So the nice thing is that we can at least focus on that. Then the other part of this problem is to figure out what's going on. So this is, these both have Van Hooft factors. So calcium nitrate, that's going to be one calcium and two nitrates. So this has a Van Hooft factor of 3. This has a Van Hooft factor of 2. So really, even though this is one molal, this is really 3 molal. Or what I'm doing is I'm taking one, the molality times the I factor to get 3. So if I take 2 times my I here, I get 4. So when I look at these, this one does have the higher concentration. So my lithium fluoride does have the higher concentration, even though it has the lower value of I. That higher molal concentration combined with its Van Hooft factor is going to give it more solute, more stuff dissolved in it. So therefore, when I think about vapor pressure, my lithium fluoride is going to have is going to have the lowest vapor pressure, and my lithium fluoride is going to have the lowest freezing point. So this vapor pressure lowering, freezing point low, freezing point depression. So the freezing point gets lower, the vapor pressure gets lower from the collusive properties, from the concepts. So when I'm then looking, and all of these are saying about, talking about the other, the opposite one, always talking about the calcium. So the calcium therefore should have a higher one, right? So lithium is the lower one, and they should match each other. That means the calcium should have the higher of each, and that should match. And so I want higher and higher for both of them. That is answer choice D. So D is the correct answer. And let me just go ahead, because I did, I did grab the answers, I thought. Yeah. No problem. But that's, that's how we do it. Right about one. Okay, so one. What's next? Is it this one? This one, 19. How long does it take to reach 85, 83, bleh, 83% complete? If the rate constant is etc. So this is a kinetics question, first of all. So I'm going to grab the integrated rate laws. There's basically going to be two parts to this question. So first of all, I want to use one of these equations. How do I know which one to use? So I did cover this in the video, in the actual review session. So we are actually going to use the units. So this says the rate constant is, so that is my value of K. And I'm actually going to use the units here. So I actually know that my rate has to have, so that my rate would be equal to my rate constant times my concentration raised to some power. The units of the rate are always in molarity per second. The units of my K here are seconds inverse. So therefore, when I'm looking at how many of this is left, how many of the similarities are left, I get rid of my seconds. Those cancel out, and all I'm left with is one molarity. Oops, this supposed to be an A just for kicks and giggles. So therefore, this should be one. That, that value of X should be one, because there's only one power here, so that's just one. So this is first order. Since I now know that's first order, I can come over to my equation sheet. And this is the part you are going to have to know without anybody telling you. These are first order, and this is first order. So those are my first order equations that I get to work with. So since we are dealing with percent complete, honestly, either one of these will work. It doesn't really matter which one you use. It might show off both just for fun. The other thing we have to do, though, is this says 83% complete. So we need to think about this for a minute. Because when we are talking about reaction progress, and that's what this is talking about. So when I have something like reaction progress, it's going to go from 0% to 100% complete. And it says that I am 83% complete. But all of my equations have the reactant in there. All of these like As that are in all of these equations, all the As are reactants. My concentration of my reactant starts at 100% and goes to 0%. Which means when you pick 83% complete, that is actually some other number. Is it 17? Yeah, 17. That is actually 17% of the reactant is left. Over. So that's the other thing that we needed to do. Now we have this weird percent thing happening. So there's two different ways to do this. It's up to you how you want to do this. A lot of people, I'm going to do it the way that I think the book does it, which I think is with this one. I'm going to do it with the other one, too, because honestly, I usually do it with the top one. So the natural log of the original concentration divided by the concentration at whatever time it actually is, is equal to, this is a positive one, right? Yeah, positive one, positive Kt. So what we know is if we were starting at the beginning, we would have 100%, but we are going to 17%. And the rate constant was given in the problem, it's 7.8. 7.8 times t. So I'm going to use my calculator. Somewhere on your calculator, there is a natural log button. It exists. You need to find it. Everybody's got different calculators, so I do not know where yours is. I can theoretically help you find it. It is easier to try to find it now when things are calm than in the middle of the exam. So I do recommend you guys try this one out on your own and make certain that you know where it is on your calculator, not on your phone. But that's just my advice. Boom. Done. So that's the answer. It's 0.227 seconds. Where is the thing that would look like the answer? This thing? Yeah. So there's, there's the answer. No problem. I will go ahead and show you guys how you do it with the other equation, just to show you that it does still work. So I'm going to use this top equation real quick, just, just to demonstrate that it does not matter which one you use. So this is the natural log of the concentration of the reactant at some time is equal to negative Kt plus the natural log of the original concentration. Now, the only real tricky thing here, and I don't, I don't think it's tricky, but if it's kind of that, like, if, if you know, you know. And, and I know something special about this. So usually you guys know that if it's percentages, I usually like whole numbers. This is the one time where if it's percentages, you actually want to use one instead of a hundreds and 0.17. Now, both will work, both will work. But the thing is, is that if I use the concentration of A at whatever time it is as 0.17, that means I get to use the concentrate, the original concentration as being one. The natural log of one is zero. Which is great. Because that means that this just becomes zero, as long as I take the natural log of 0.17. So that, that is my personal preference in there. Again, you could do it the other way, you will still get the right answer, as long as they match, as long as they match. So pick, you can either pick 100 and 17, or you can pick 1 and 0.17. Either, either way is just fine. As long as they match. And I get T to equal 0.227, like, uses in seconds. And that is the same as what we got before. So both equations work. You will get the same answer. So both, both are valid. All right, last but not least, where did it go? Is this one? Oh, no, that was, that was the answer to number one. I don't want that. I want is it you? Nope. Sorry, I grabbed this before. In the before time. Oh, that's the answer. Oh, I didn't want the answer. Ah, did I already delete you? Let me get this thing. Okay, I have to go back and grab it again, because apparently I might have just missed it. So we're going to do number 26, and I did not actually want to have the correct answer bolded, because I just wanted to walk through everything. But alas, sometimes I mess up. Okay, 26. So yes, you guys can't see me scrolling through the exam, but that's funny, because I don't know about you. I personally do not enjoy watching other people scroll. It kind of makes my eyes hurt. So I am, I am fine. Okay. So 26. Which statement is false? So these are the kinds of questions, if y'all are new this semester, that this, which statement is false, looks so straightforward that you're like, no problem. But what that really means is we have to evaluate all five of these as true, false statements, essentially. So this is really not the simple problem that it might look like. This is really five true, false questions rolled into one. So first of all, it says, enthalpy of solution can be either endothermic or exothermic. That is true. That's true just for different things dissolving in water alone. That is also true, if you just want to think about gases dissolving in liquids is exothermic, and sugar dissolving in water is endothermic. So yeah, absolutely true. Separation of solute particles from one another is always an endothermic process. This is also true, because when we're talking about that, this is talking about breaking intermolecular forces. Oh, no. Breaking intermolecular forces. And breaking is always going to be endothermic. This is actually part of that definition. So breaking is endothermic. Even though it says always, and I know that that's a dangerous thing, this is also a true statement. If a solution is an ideal solution, there are similar strength intermolecular interactions existing between all of these things. This is one of the definitions that goes with Rollewood's law. So for those of you that are like, I have never heard of this definition before, go back and take a look at the Rollewood's law definition that would have gone with the graph that looks something like this. And that is part of how we do an ideal solution, how we know. So that, all being said, that is actually true. I know it's really long. So there's lots of things in there that could make it false, but that is actually true. Dissolution reaction only occurs if the delta H of solution is exothermic. So this one might be tempting, because things that are exothermic are favorable, because they release energy. But sugar dissolves in water, and sugar dissolving in water is in fact endothermic. And if y'all have not already tried that out, you should definitely dissolve some sugar in water the next time you guys are at a place that has water and sugar. Also, basically, D and A kind of go against each other. So so D is going to wind up being the, the correct answer. So this, this one is in fact false. Well, let's go and do the last one, too. If the delta H of solution is endothermic, then the attractive forces of the pure substances are greater than the attractive forces of the solution. So it says pure substances in here, because this is talking about the solute solute, solute interactions and the solvent solvent interactions. So this goes back to, there was an Alex thing where it would have like solute, solute, breaking, and then solvent, solvent, breaking, and then it would come back down. And if it didn't come all the way back down, then it was endothermic. So this is also true. Because essentially, your delta H of solution involves three pieces. And so it's going to be the breaking, solute, solute, the breaking, solvent, solvent, and then the forming of solvent solute. These two pieces are positive. This piece is negative. So if the two positive pieces have greater attractive forces, have greater strengths, have a larger value than the negative piece, then everything's going to be positive, and that is what that statement is trying to describe. So D is the false one. Everything else is in fact true. Pulling from different things and different parts. We pulled this once already, so I'm going to hopefully that that's the right thing. There we go. Okay, so those were the five questions that I was asked to do that I did not do during the exam review. If y'all do have more questions, we've got office hours, peer tutoring, chemistry clinic. So do, do get help if you need it this week.